We're ready.
We're live, okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the Whole for Monday, September 9, 2024. This is an in-person meeting, is a joint meeting, it's, no, a joint meeting, is a hybrid meeting, it is in-person and also we have counselors on Zoom. So with that, we'll do the roll call.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Councilor Tally, Councilor Norris, Councilor Sheffield, and Councilor Patterson are present.
Okay, thank you. We have a quorum. So with that, I'll take a motion to move executive session to immediately following roll call.
So moved.
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, abstention, motion carries. So we are, I will need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-206 Alpha of Personnel Police Department to include the mayor, council, Jimmy Chin, and Chief Burton.
So moved. Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, motion carries, okay? We are in executive session. Once we're done, we will come back into the meeting.
Recording in progress. Recording stopped.
Okay, we are back in session. We call the meeting back in session. So we'll continue.
Recording in progress.
I'm going to call the meeting back in session. We are under new business. So with that, Ron, financial update?
So if you called the last cow when the Groton Utilities annual report was presented, there were some questions that came up based on some of the financial information in there. And there's no doubt we had kind of gotten away from doing the monthly financial reports. So what we're going to do is we're going to start getting back on track with those. So we put it back on the agenda. We're not going to go over them tonight. We're going to, most likely going to shoot for the second cow of every month to go over them. If those meetings appear like they're going to be long, then we may push it to the first of the following month. But we're going to try to get back on track with doing the monthly financials at the second cow of the month. So it's just kind of informative. We just wanted to let you know it did get brought up at the last cow. We didn't want you to think that it kind of just slipped away and faded away, but, so it is on there. So we will present the Groton Utilities ones and the city ones at the next cow.
Any questions or comments for Ron? All right, that's it. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Linda, the next is the salary study review. Linda will be talking about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a little different. Thank you. Okay, so the last probably year and a half, the HR department has been working on salary reviews. And there's a company called In Tandem that GU used for salary survey. And so we were allowed to use their product. So that's what we did. This particular, this company in tandem does a lot of HR compensation work and they just have a huge, huge resources to pull from. But anyway, the best thing that we were able to use from them is the compensation evaluation system. And the reason we did that, actually, I want to start with that, is that we were finding that there were some positions that were very difficult to fill. They still are, but during this time, we were unable to find a purchasing agent, a director of building and zoning, and dispatchers are very difficult to find and to hang on to. So we did this whole market study. Well, the market study was really the towns and cities study, that was our market. And the In Tandem allowed us to put together where everybody sat as far as functions of their job. So, for instance, this page that says In Tandem Leadership, what we did, we took the job descriptions and it was usually the three HR people plus the department head. And when it was a manager, the mayor was in the panel also. And what we did was we took the job description and we went through all of these particular categories that they have. So, for instance, leadership. And I'm sure you know that, obviously, it's different between, say, well, I guess you could say admin assistant compared to the management folks that would get a higher, a higher score. So we did that with, I think there were, it didn't print out for you guys, I'm so sorry, mustn't so not have hit the double sided. So we had leadership, accountability, problem solving, intercommunication, and those were all scored. And on number-
Yeah, hold on a second.
Yep.
If you look at your, the original packet, so there's, there's leadership, accountability, problem solving, so on. The second, the second packet, it didn't go back and forth, double sided, but on the first packet it did.
I know, I'm sorry, yep.
And I think you got the first packet right, okay.
So now, I don't think you have this one, on number three in the packet, this is just an example, this is actually real, but it's an example for you to look at to see how we did this. So for leadership, for instance, the executive adminis, executive administrator received a B+. So once everybody was graded with the num, with the letters, there are numbers that correlate with that, and that's how you come up with a total score. And what the total score does is put that job, not the person, puts that job into place so you can see how it aligns with the other positions. And we do that for all of the city staff that are non-union. And then the next thing we did when we had all that done is that we, we did a lot of research. Sue and I did a lot of research on what the numbers were in different cities and towns. We looked at some of their budgets, CCM, I reached out, I've got a circle of HR director friends and there's about 10 of us, and we reach out to each other all the time to get information and they send back information too. Now, on your iPad, you can see the colors of the next sheet, which is number four. And that shows you what the salaries were for the town of Groton, Branford, New London, Stonington, Watford, Mottville, Norwich, East Lyme and Ledger. Now, obviously, they don't give us all of the positions that we have, but it gave us a pretty good idea of where things were. And if you could see the colors, all the numbers in green are higher than what our salaries are. And it's difficult, we spoke of this before, Paul, how it's not apples to apples, it's pretty difficult to try to get some numbers, but quite a few of these towns and cities put together a average and then sort of graded it with the, in the 30 percentile, 60 percentile, that kind of thing. So that helped us also to see how we stood. The other reason besides having positions difficult to find is that the unions had pretty substantial increases this year. One position, between the increase that they got initially and then a July 1 increase, and not all of them did that, but they got both, and they came up with about a 21% increase in pay. So it was a bit difficult for us to sort of, their information's on the bottom, and that's a CSEA, white collar union. Difficult for us to, to do anything about that. We did as much as we could and I think people were satisfied with it. And basically, I know Gwen felt that if I had given a one person and taken it right through that, that would have been great, great idea, should have called you earlier. But I can do that and send it to you if you'd like. And if you have any other questions, I will be happy to try to answer them now or later. Yes, ma'am. I mean, I'm sorry, I did that last time.
I actually, this page that you provided does do that, does go through and show like how the grades translate into the number.
Yes.
Which is what I was interested to see.
What that number means.
See this process applied.
Okay.
So I do think it's a really comprehensive way to assess, like with these categories, to assess the positions. It makes a lot of sense. And part of the reason that I wanted to have this presented at a committee of the whole is so that people can see how we reviewed it, that it was an objective review of the roles. So I guess my only other question I have is, so this assessment was done regardless of the person that's in the role, but if we had an empty role and we were going to hire new into it, this is the rate that that person should be paid?
Well, what we have to do now is because we have all of these, I now have to go in and build a structure around that. So we need to just look at minimum, mid, and max. So when we hire somebody, they would be hired between the minimal, the minimum and the max, and the mid, the minimum and the mid, and would redline or tap out at the, at the max. I've always had that in other companies and we don't have it here. So that's the next step. And that'll give us a great source to go to when someone gets hired.
And then, oh, sorry.
I was going to say to answer, so to provide you some additional information, we were having some challenges with our salaries. And I was talking to the town manager, they looked at their salaries, we'd been looking at this for a while. We're trying to be competitive with our, with the surrounding towns because basically we're in competition for the same people with that. So we are looking, you know, that's one of the drivers. What else did you ask? Well, but, so we did want to make sure that we're, for the entry, you know, for, you said, is it just for the person or for the position? So we're trying to make sure that we have the, that we're right sized for the position, right? And then based on job descriptions and everything else and our ability to be able to hire, that's one of the things we're trying to make sure that we have salaries targeted towards. Hopefully, that answers a little more.
Mm-hmm. So my, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, none of them.
So then, is the intent, so some of these are standard regardless of the person that's in the role. Leadership is what your position of leadership is. It's not how much that person shows leadership, it's how much their position requires leadership.
Exactly, exactly.
Problem solving, same thing. But for example, experience is going to depend on person. So when we hire someone new, are we still using this assessment on a new person to get that score to see if their rate should be higher or lower based on the-
How much experience they have.
Yeah.
I would like to put those two together, the structure and then that, that expertise, is that the one?
Yeah, I think, yep.
I think so. Yes, so that would be really helpful because we get people here, it makes, we hire a lot of people. And they come in with all types of years in service and so that would be very helpful to help us pinpoint where that min, mid is.
Okay. And then how, so moving forward, I don't know how to word this question, but what role does merit play in people's salaries?
Interesting. We don't have any merit-based increases. And it's something that people have been talking about for a long time and they have a right to not be happy about that. We do have to build that. We have to come together and talk about how we're going to do merit increases. There are some, some departments do it because they have certifications, like IT, they have to have certifications, and if they get so many on a grid that they, they use, then they can get an increase, a bump during that time. So if they hit their like third certificate. But for the most part, there aren't any merit increases.
Which, in the public sector, that's not uncommon, correct? Or is that, because we have to hit certain standards or we're, I feel like we're always chasing the market because we're trying to be responsible with taxpayer dollars.
Exactly.
So we're always kind of chasing the market instead of-
We're, we're never going to be leading the market.
Right.
But you're right. But, so one of the challenges that we ran into, or that you run into, is that if you're in a bargaining, if you're in a bargaining unit, you go through the collective bargaining process and your salary is set along with increases for the duration of the contract. And that doesn't change. So we've, we've talked about how do we introduce merit-based evaluations and those kinds of things. So then you break away from that and now you look at the non-union. So you have my department heads, but you also have quite a few other non-union staffs who are trying, non-union staff, who are trying to make a difference and to differentiate between them and the collective bargaining units and look at a merit-based system for them when it comes to the annual, annual increases. Because right now, what we've done is if the unions get an average of this, then that's what everybody had always gotten. The non-unions got that same average so that everybody was kind of sort of treated equal. But now we're reevaluating that process.
May I speak?
Yes, please.
But in the union contracts, there are steps. So even though you're going to get a 3% on July 1, you're also at your anniversary going up a step. So you're getting more money, so you get two raises a year, basically. And, you know, that's up in, people know that, a lot of people know that. And they'll say, why don't we have steps? You know, so they've talked to me about that a couple of times. And I think a merit increase would be better based on their performance.
Yep.
Because some of the people who get steps should have stayed down at the bottom.
I, I think that's a difficult thing is that the, the union does that for the union members, they push that for them. So the non-union employees don't really have anyone to lobby for that.
Correct.
And I, we have been, as we discussed at the employee picnic, you know, we have been trying to add more activities like that, you know, giving back to the employees and showing appreciation. But those things only go so far.
Correct.
So I would be interested in, you know, us looking into merit. I think people want to be appreciated and, at work, and most of the time that means with money. So-
Unfortunately, yes.
Yeah. You know, so, and we have, when we have good employees, we want to be able to keep them. So if people are warranting a merit increase, I think we need to find a way to, to do something.
I agree.
Thank you very much for all your work on this.
You're welcome.
And this, like I said, this, this is exactly what I was looking for.
Wonderful. I get an A.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Sheffield?
Yes, being part of two unions as I am right now, you know, that merit system normally will not take place, not anytime soon anyway, as far as the union negotiations. So that, that's something that never appears to be much of a factor. It probably would be beneficial, I guess, if you're looking for getting potential output in a certain area or expertise, you know, department, but that's something that I don't see that happening anytime soon. And when these negotiations is pretty much, you know, salary raise based of, you know, how much percentage the employee will make each year until their contract expires, and then you go back to the table to negotiate again. And normally, those negotiations don't take into account of merit-based, you know, as far as your, your job description. Non-union, yeah, I, I guess, you know, managers, you know, at the, at the grocery store will get evaluated whether they'll get a bonus or something like that at the end of the year, or, you know, or a salary raise, but that's up to corporate to take care of. So the municipal employment, working for the government, that's a whole different thing compared to the private sector. So that's something to take a look at. When you're looking to compete for employees, the private sector's always going to pay more than the public sector. So the competition for talent is, is going to be difficult in a lot of cases. So if we can somewhat compete for private sector type of salary, and it's, and then we maximize the benefits of the, working for the government, then I think it, you know, it's something that's, that's workable. But, but like I said, when you work for a municipality, work for a state, local government or federal government, those, those types of jobs are going to be based on the contract, negotiation for salary and not so much your, your job performance. Though, like I said, I think job performance is, is important, but it doesn't appear to be part of the negotiating process when these contracts come up, so that's all I have for now.
Well, in this discussion, this is not about union contracts, that's one of the things that drove it. But in the past, municipal, people would come and work for municipalities even though the salary wasn't necessarily where it was in the private industry, but our, our overall benefits package was better than what was in the private industry. But recently, we identified that we had a, we had a gap between us and some of the local MEUs and we corrected that. We corrected that during the collective, the collective bargaining process. And then when we had the salary raises there, that we were already looking at a salary study, but that gave us the impetus to focus on the non-union. And the non-union is where you can put in the, the merit-based increase. There's no, no one is suggesting that we're going to look at merit-based for union activities. So I don't want anybody to get that misconception out there. So what we're talking about tonight, these are non-union salaries. This whole study was done on non-union salaries. Okay? Any other questions or comments? Councilor Norris?
A few, if you don't mind. First, in the city, what kind of retirement do we have? Is it a pension plan? So we still go with a pension plan, not a 401K or anything like that?
Correct. We have a 457 plus.
Right. So that's a, that's a big driving factor. Right, so that's a, that's a big driving factor. Cause most municipalities, like businesses, are getting away from pension plans, they're doing four one K. If you're lucky, so tha- that's a big thing we should be touting the city and using that for recruitment. It's a massive piece, um the other piece to that is. In the three years I've gone through budgets now. My feeling is pay increases are all over the place. Like one person gets three percent, one person gets five percent, one person, it's all over the place. So I don't know how that came about, you know, you know, what I always heard was when we did some type of comparison. We should've gotten it, so that's why this came about. I would venture to say if the mayor sets a three percent increase for non-union workers. To some of them, that's gonna be a good deal because a merit based. Increase means you could get a one point five or a two and not necessarily a three. So that's a whole nother conversation for evaluations. Thank you for this, cause I I am very familiar with this. So my question is, if you took. Our police chief and did this questionnaire. Did you take the police chief from other municipalities and did the same legwork?
Well, yes, because I, all the jobs that are listed are the ones that we looked into and for the police chiefs. Yes, we did look at.
I guess my question is.
Hold on, I wanna answer the question you asked, cause it may not be the question that you wanna ask next. So did we do the same process for all the other chiefs that we did for our chief?
Right.
No. Now, let me, let me, let me say why I say no. Did we do a comparison of salaries? Yes. Did we send out a questionnaire or did we do a questionnaire on them on them in each of these categories? No, because they don't work for us. So what, all we can do is look at their job description, look at our job description, look at their salaries. Now, we, and I'll let Linda go down this road a little more, but we did, we did. Not a hundred percent apples to apples comparison to any department heads, right? You could say police chief here, police chief there, this police chief may have more people, this police chief may have less people. This police chief may have uh different things that they're doing based on their job description, all those things. So we did the best that we could to do an apples to apples comparison within a a specific labor category. Does that better answer your question?
Yes, because my understanding, this tool is used for in-house determining pay brackets. Not as a comparison with other jobs in other agencies. So that's why I was like, how did, so here's my perfect example, and I I hope these folks don't mind.
Just use the, yeah, well.
So he, well, I ha- kinda have to, it's probably, people are gonna read it. So I'm trying to determine, so the police chief got a five percent increase. Or I guess proposed, so five percent, alright? And the, well, I could be wrong, no, the police chief got a three. Whoa, 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 stop, no, I'm right, so the, where am I here? Police.
He received a five.
The police chief got a five?
Yep.
Okay, but then the. Oh, I lost my place here, oh, but the fire chief got a ten. And I'm trying to see how, how did we do that?
I can answer that. So the police chief right now is working on his masters, as soon as he gets his masters, I'm gonna correct his salary. Based on that additional thing that he did. He had his masters at the time, he would've been a ten percent.
So ten percent, w- well, let's go with that. So the police chief at ten percent would take him to what?
An additional, you mean an extra five percent, actually looking at?
So his fiscal year twenty-five annual would take him from, I I guess I'm trying to. Th- this is what I'm trying to figure out, so when I look at, let's say Norwich. Is it Norwich, yeah. So I see the fire chief in Norwich is at one thirty-eight.
Are we talking fire or are we talking police?
Well, I'm I'm just starting with fire right now, so we're saying that in fiscal year twenty-five, the fire chief is gonna go to one twenty-seven.
Alright, hold on. Alright, so the fire chief is at one twenty-seven, nine, yep.
So, my very first question is, how did we come up with that? Since we only have essentially one town that you have benchmarked to come up with an all figure.
We also reached out to, within the town of Groddan, there are the fire districts that we have. And we did look at those fire chiefs as well.
Okay.
Right, make sure I'm right, Linda, right, we talked about, we looked at them?
I don't think we did.
See, I think we did.
Well, the point is, did or did not, it would be nice to have that information. Where I'm, where I'm going with this is, so we have the police chief.
Yep.
That even with ten percent.
Yep.
Would only be at one twenty-eight.
Yep.
Which is far less than every other benchmark here.
Right.
Well, across the, obviously, the bigger towns have more more employees in the fire department.
Okay, so I go back to my original question, and I I I, I'm not picking on you, if you're listening. I I'm just trying to understand, how did we, like, so how did you determine the rate? And then how did you determine who gets three percent, who gets five percent, who gets ten? That, I, the reason why I was looking at this, cause I had nothing to do this weekend, is. That I couldn't find a pattern, I. And 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 that's what I was looking for, was what was the pattern that drove these numbers?
Well, for most of the three percenters, um we had given them a bump. A couple of months before the July first increase because they were underpaid. And I'm looking right now at the police dispatchers. And so they got a bump, a bump, and then they got another bump um of three percent in July. So they essentially probably got, I don't know, maybe a, maybe an eight percent, I have to look back at the other numbers.
Yeah, but even what you're saying, there's no pattern, cause like, did you give three percent because they were already higher than other benchmarks? So it was just like, oh, three percent, or that's what I, I mean, again, I'm looking at the finance, director of finance. All other towns are at a lesser benchmark, but we're still giving a three percent.
Right.
Why?
Okay, so the three percent is the the lowest benchmark that I have for an annual increase. So every year, or the last couple of years, the non-unions have gotten three percent. That's what they get, they're three percent. So Ron, basically, all he got was, you can call it a cost of living, you can call it whatever you wanna call it.
Okay.
But he did not get, so when you look at these, and. So when you look at, if you're looking at, oh my gosh, look how big we are. Uh you take three percent off that because they were gonna get a three percent anyway. Right, now, some of these, for example, if you go back to uh the police captain. She got a three percent, but that's because she's finishing her MBA, or her masters, rather, when she gets her masters, she'll get a bump as well. Uh we went, we looked at everybody, cause at one point, we were looking at, do we wanna do a ten percent across the board? And I said, I don't wanna do that, I wanna make sure that we're we're evaluating each individual in each position. So we're looking at the positions, as we're part of the salaries, salary survey. And the salary survey, I agree with you about the in tandem being internal, so we did use that as a basis. But we also looked at other uh surrounding municipalities and we got information from C C CCM. Uh as well, in order to see if we're in the right uh. Spread, the right uh salary range.
So if I may ask.
So each one was, so if you're saying, do we have a formula to plug and play, we did not do that, we looked at each one. Overall, but we also looked at each one separately, and then we compared them to their counterparts.
Right, so if why, so, so with the, so this three percent for fiscal year twenty-five. That's already budgeted for and given because that supposedly happened this past July one. It's not an additional three percent, so. The director of building and zoning, he's getting a, and 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 I guess I don't know how to take this, but. The final percent is zero.
I can answer that.
Please.
So um the director of building and zoning and the director of public works um both came in at one thirty, just a bit before July first. They um, they're they're brand new and we popped up that salary because we were finding it very difficult to get those positions filled. So we put that salary up to one thirty to get them, they are not eligible for another increase until July first.
So in order to hire them, I had to change the salary, the the initial salary. In order to to fill both those positions. Both those positions were difficult to fill because of certifications required.
Okay, so, let's take police dispatcher. Police dispatcher going up three percent. Why only three percent when looked at every other town, we are paying less?
Yeah, we've we've al- always been behind on the dispatchers and some of it has got to do with the difference between what our dispatchers do. And what the other cities' towns' dispatchers do.
Okay.
And I'm not well versed on that, they only do. They don't do nine one one calls.
They're here in the city, they don't do the nine one one calls, they're not doing uh EMS calls. How like uh the town or other places. In addition, uh Linda had said earlier in this year, earlier last year, we had just given the dispatchers an increase.
Right.
Uh because we had identified it separately that we probably uh were underpaying them. So we wanted to keep them, and so we did that, but we had just done that and that's why we left them at three.
We went from twenty-two to twenty-five for, I think, well, the new people and we always have new people because.
Right.
They don't stay long.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, any other, uh Counselor Sheffield?
Yeah, to follow up on what Counselor Norris was saying, um. As far as the uh percentage of raises, now I looked at the uh any chief getting five. But the deputy chief or captain is getting three percent. Is that something that uh is standard that you would do for, you know, the difference between the chief and the deputy chief or captain?
No, as stated, I'm waiting on the deputy, not deputy, Captain Leo. To finish her masters and then she will go up and then uh when the chief gets his masters, he will go up as well. So we're not, I'm not looking to keep a separ- a a a. Fin- fin- financial separation between the chief and the, uh either the deputy or the captain. However, if you look at their responsibilities, they are different and their wage, uh their wage range is different.
Okay, so is that in the contract, uh where then they get their masters, that's that's automatic step up?
No, there's no contract. These are non-union.
Okay, so that's a, so that's a verbal agreement to where, okay, you get your masters, we're gonna give you that ten percent. And if not, it just stays where it is, not not contractually agreed upon.
No, it is not.
And that goes back to my point about you, you know, union, non-union, or let's say corporate. Of course, this is non-union as far as the municipality goes, is that uh salaries are not. Uh raises are not stable or not set in stone as they are in the unions, union contracts. So um unless the non-union agreement is gonna be stipulated as such, but it's not guaranteed. But, okay, that's interesting to where nothing is uh contraption stipulating as far if the raise goes through or not.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other, Counselor Norris?
Is the masters for the police chief a requirement?
No.
So then that doesn't, you, that 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 just puzzles me that much more on this, cause then I go back to my original question. So why is he not getting a comparable pay to other municipalities? If having a master's degree is not a requirement?
He is gonna see an increase, but I'm probably not gonna bring him up twenty thousand or thirty thousand dollars a year.
So we're picking winners and chooses?
No, well, when you look at each, like I said, every, we, if you, there is not a formula that we just plugged everybody in. Everybody was looked at, we used this overall plan, goal, overall plan, rather. And then we evaluated each position and each individual individually.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Debo.
I I just wanted to make a couple of comments, I guess, on, um to bounce off what Counselor Norris is saying. Uh I just real quickly looked up the population of all of these towns that we compared them to. And all of them, except for Waterford, have at least double our population, some of them triple and quadruple, so. Some of their police chiefs are disproportionately paid, but uh so. My thought when it comes to, like, some of these positions. Don't change at all based on population, so, you know, your. Admin people that work in the office, their job's gonna be the same whether you got fifty thousand people in the city or ten thousand people. But certain positions like police chief and um, you know, planners and those types of things. Their job is dependent on the population to a certain extent and or area. So to me, it would make sense that the chief's salary wouldn't, wouldn't equal, Norwich, for example, has forty thousand residents. That's four times what we have, um so they probably should be making more than our chief is making. So I think that makes sense to me, I would imagine that's something we took into a account.
And for instance, on the city planner, I think most of the cities and towns, the city planner. Has the building and zoning reporting to them, and we don't here, so that's a, that's I think a big one.
Counselor Norris?
I do not disagree, matter of fact, I agree with what you're saying is actually happening, it's great. But I don't see that standard across the board, that's all I'm saying. Um but it is what it is, the the, I I I just don't, I I just don't agree with whatever methodology was used. Because if it's not a standardized methodology, it it it's all over the place.
But we did do a standardized methodology, the baseline was standardized, and then we looked at each individual. And we looked, we still, you still have to look at the individual positions, compare them to look at others. And to make sure that we're marketable and um. Take into account the individual and what they're doing, and that's where the the standardization comes from this thing. Right, from the. This gives us the standardization, everybody, we we use this on everybody. All of the, all the uh non-union staff, that's, we started with that, and then we did the. And then we did the comparisons, uh, job descriptions with other municipalities. So that's as close as I can get you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then this was just informing, so, uh, that's it. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Extinction motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, Linda. Thank you, counsel.